Motion passes. The next item is the consent agenda. Any questions or concerns on the consent agenda? I'll maintain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It moves in second. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next is public comment. What looks like David, you're here to speak on the annexation, so we'll call you up on that agenda item. And then Dan, are you here to speak on a permit?
Back on April 7th, I put in a, first off, I live over 104 Dearborn Street. Back on April 7th, I put in a permit with the county, with the Environmental Services Department for a water well. My property is large enough to meet the requirements for all the, all the minimum requirements to have a well drilled on it. So, I put in that permit, and so that being that it's within city limits here, the county came and, and down here, called down here and talked about it. That the answer that they gave the county was that water wells aren't allowed inside city limits here. So, essentially, my question was, was there a code amendment that prohibited water wells inside city limits here? And there is not. And then, so I asked what the other reason was for denying it. And the answer given was from the code book here. The city has the 2003 code. I'm gonna use the 2006 code, but for purposes of this, it reads essentially the same. So, the part of the code that was quoted as prohibiting wells here was, this is the 2006 plumbing code, this is section 602.4. That section reads, "No water piping supplied by any private water supply system shall be connected to any other source of supply without the approval of the authority having jurisdiction, health department, or other department having jurisdiction." This part of the code was quoted to me as saying that where there is an existing public water supply, a private water supply is not allowed, which is not my understanding of what this is reading. This section of the code, that's, that's not even really close to what this code says, is what I was quote, quoted anyway. This essentially says in the code here that if there is a water supply, a private water supply, any public water supply, you just can't connect the two without permission, implying that permission can be given. The previous three sections of the code deal with if there is a connection between the two, how to do it safely, properly, also implying that connections are allowed. The, uh, other thing with this argument is that if, if I put in a well, and I'm denied permission to connect it to the public water supply, that's not really a conflict with code. By code, if I drill a water well, I'm allowed different ways to do that. I can drill a well, and it can sit there and do nothing. I can drill a well, and I can put irrigation on it. I can drill a well, I can connect it to plumbing fixtures in my house, or whatever else, and not connect it to anything that's connected to the public water split system. Or, I can connect the two, and do so with an approved backflow prevention device in between the two. Or, I can take my well, and I can connect it to everything in my house, and disconnect from the public water supply. So, to me, that argument doesn't, doesn't stand on its head. I was told that my appeal process for this was to go to the zoning board of appeals. I was told that's not the right way, so I said, "What else?" And they said, "Come here and talk to you guys." There is actually more to that, the appeal process. I can go much further than this. I can go through the county appeal process, all the way up to the state level within the plumbing code. The other thing is, I have spoken, I've done my homework on this long ahead. I have also spoken with a senior codes administrator with the state, with the plumbing codes administrator, and have been, had it verified that this is the correct interpretation of the code. And Baldwin not having a prohibition, and a, and a, an amendment to the plumbing code prohibiting wells within the city limits, does allow me to drill one here. And so, basically, I'm asking for an overruling here, because I don't think that's appropriate denial of my application with that argument. It doesn't, it doesn't fit with anything I see in the code. So... That's it for the moment.
The public comment section is for the public to give us comments.
Okay.
And then, we can take those under advisement now.
So, then what do I do? Okay.
There is another agenda item that pertains to this, on this agenda, so we'll ask for public comment again.
More of that.
At that time.
Okay.
But right now, it's just public comment to get information from the public to the council.
Okay. Am I misunderstanding? Sorry.
So, we don't, we don't try to converse back and forth with the public during this time.
Okay. So, just come back in a little bit here, then?
So, stick around.
Okay. See you in a few.
There's more to the story. Anybody else here from the public that'd like to, any comments? Next is old business policy for the sale and lease of city properties. Glenn and Aaron believe all the changes were made to the policy based on the advice of the council at the last meeting. Is that correct?
Believe so, yeah. If there's any more changes, I think I incorporated everything you were talking about at the last meeting.
I have a couple of suggestions. I believe that, let me bring up the policy here. One question I have is, it says with appropriate real estate agencies that you can lease the property. I'm not sure what appropriate real estate agency is, I mean, aren't they all okay?
Yeah, we typically try to use agents from within our community to help support local businesses, but other than that...
And how is that decided? Which agency that you go with? I mean, is it rotating through the different agencies?
That's what we've done on the last properties, is we used, I think Stevens had one listed for a while, and Roise Nichols, another Nichols, Roise Nichols' agent had one listed for a while, but tried to use different agents for different things to make sure it's fair for everybody. That's been past practice.
They didn't really say that in there, so I was wondering about that. The other thing is, I think that the line where it says, "Sell or lease property through sealed bids, live auction, online auction, or negotiations," I think that should also have after review by the city council. And the other line, "All contracts for sale or lease of city property will be approved by the city council," and I think it should be, "All sale or lease considerations and contracts of city property will be with the approval of the city council." I just think it makes it a lot clearer of the, the importance that the city council has the opportunity to do all of these things.
Yeah, I mean, it shouldn't matter way one way or the other, so it's up to the council.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I think those are appropriate changes. Was there any discussion, I apologize for not being here for the last meeting, that this can be, also be ordinance to go along with the policy? I don't know if that was brought up.
I did bring that up at the last meeting.
I think we just saw an example of when you have code that says one thing, and you don't have a law to back it up. To me, this provides the most protection to citizens if we have an ordinance saying basically the same thing. This tells staff for it to do its policy. I'm thinking about the citizen's side, and where's the protection for the citizens that this is going to be enforced, and their opportunities are gonna be ensured. I trust that if this is a policy, this is the direction we're going, but it, it could fall apart too.
Glenn? Anything on that?
You can do it either way, yeah. I mean, we've, yeah, turning into an ordinance wouldn't be very hard, and it's very short the way it is right now, so it wouldn't be hard to turn into a full ordinance.
Blake, how, you weren't here at the last meeting, I don't know.
I wasn't.
How, I mean, can we have that turned by the first meeting in July?
I would assume so, yeah.
With those, with Julie's suggestions?
Yeah. Julie, would you mind just shoot me an email with your, what you would like your suggestions to be, and I can, I should be able to get that turned around pretty quick.
Okay. That sounds great, thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Any other items on that discussion? Any public comment on that agenda item?
I will say one more thing. I forgot, I'm sorry, Mayor. You know, I just wanna go back to several months ago, Scott said this, that we might consider a plan for these buildings that we had downtown, and we've got to this point. I regret not speaking out when you said that. I feel like I should have, and so I just wanna get that on the record. I feel like if we would've looked at this a little harder and taken more time, maybe we would've ended up, well, Scott says we might end up in the same exact place with, you know, what's going on in those buildings, but I regret not speaking out and supporting that idea.
Next is new business annex, annexation of land, corner of 56 and East 1600 Road.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. You have in your packet the annexation request. I'm representing the owner of the property, Charles Ford, and we visited with Ed Corton about the project, and so, just to keep it brief, the owner would like to annex it because to stand accounting, split it into two five-acre parcels, it would not be proven. So, basically, his goal is to split it into two five-acre parcels, and the owner's here if you have any questions on the specifics of that, but we've documented kind of what happens with utilities, what's served by the city, what's served by Evergy, and so forth, so that's all been documented with Ed as well, but it's pretty simple. So, the next step after this, pending approval, is we'd spend a plat splitting those two lots, or two parcels into, one parcel and two parcels. So, with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Any questions for David? Before we go, could you explain the utilities out there, and how they're working currently?
Yeah, I didn't bring that email, but basically, the, the utilities are served, so both property, or there's, there's one house out there, it's served by Septic, and it's served by the Water District, and Evergy services the electric. And so, after the split, the, the new parcel would more or less be served by kind of the city, except for the Evergy, because it's in their territory, which requires some payment back and forth, and so, Chris can address that if you have any questions on that. But, the existing house would remain on Septic and Water District. The, the new parcel, when it's developed, would be on City Water, and then City Sewer, I think, is what we talked about. But, again, it's been documented, but that's, that's essentially what happens with that.
Okay. All right. Just to make that clear, the, the existing one is not gonna come in, we're not gonna, it's not, the plan is not to require them to adopt city utilities on the existing parcel around it.
Correct. Yeah, it's, it's still quite a ways away from the city water line and city sewer line, so... Anything further?
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak to this agenda item?
Well, is this, is this something I'm...
You have to step up, sorry. Anybody that speaks has to step up to the podium and state your name and address.
I'm Dan Marx, I'm the one that occupies the house that's existing on the property. Is this something that's going to eventually have to be, if we annex to the city, we're gonna have to eventually hook to city sewers to, for their electricity, for the water, you know, is that something we're gonna have to eventually do, or?
Well, I think, I think code requires that if you're within 200 or 250 feet of a city sewer, then you have to connect to that at that point. If you're not within that, that space, then you don't have to on that. And like he said, the, the electric is a different beast, because certain companies own certain territories, so as long as Evergy still owns your territory of that house, you won't be connected to Baldwin Power until that point.
All right. And so, I got it.
All right. Rob, did I get that right?
That's correct.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak to this agenda item?
My name's Doyle Jordan, I live at 1203 High Street, and I would be the interested party in the new partial. It's, it's family property, and just to have an opportunity to, to build out there on that site, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Doyle. Anybody else?
Just a quick question.
So, I found that email. Basically, everything I told you was correct, except we talked about that the new house would be on Septic, because it's still within, it's further away from 200 feet from the sewer system, so, yeah.
All right. Council discussion?
From a planning and zoning perspective, did something happen if we were to approve this? What's the next step with this piece of land? Does it go through a process with our planning and zoning commission?
Yep, they'd have to go through a lot split process through planning and zoning, and then it'd come back before the council, for the site plan, or with the new parcels.
I'm thinking of another time that we annexed a piece of land that was already zoned, I assume. Did it go through that same process?
Yeah.
It was already...
Yeah. Anytime typically you annex land, it's zoned agriculture, so you have to go through a rezoning process to get it zoned or won, and then you go through the lot split at that same time as well.
So, can I hear correctly, we're running water out there, and just not sewer and not electricity?
Plan, I'd have to defer.
Yeah, I suppose that is the plan, since those are, would be cost prohibitive to get out to the, to properties out there.
But we're running water to it?
I believe so, that's...
Or they're running water to it?
There's existing water nearby, on that road itself.
A rural, is it the rural?
No, it's city water. You have the tank, the tower right there.
Yeah, so it's, we have a tower, the west coast.
Close within 200 feet. Water is.
The water is, yeah.
Right.
But not, not sewer. And electric, as I think the mayor said, goes actually by territory, as defined by the state, and so, they're, if they're in Evergy's territory, then we could petition to bring them into our territory, but it's gonna be costly to do that. We could ask, if they really wanna be on our electric, you know, there's costs of doing that, and there's cost of buying out Evergy. So, so anyway, either way, they got electric here to buy it out.
Got you. Rob?
Just, just for clarification, extending that water line would be a property owner's expense.
Correct. Yeah, city won't be running any water lines for it. Any other questions or comments from the council? No, I maintain a motion.
I move we approve the annexation of land corner of 56 Highway and East 1600 Road.
Second.
It moves in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is substation maintenance proposal.
So, the substation currently have, we do a five-year maintenance on it. Since the last time we've done it, the company that we were using went out of business, well, actually, they were bought out by another business, and the business that bought them out sent us a bid of a hundred and some thousand dollars last year, and I wasn't willing to do that, since it went up from almost four grand, from $4,000 to a hundred and some thousand dollars, just seemed a little unreasonable. So, I've been doing a lot of searching around for companies that do this. I found one in south, it's Southwest Electric Company, they're out of Oklahoma. We did budget a hundred thousand dollars for this project. What they do is they go through the substation transformer, and the five MVA transformer that's, that is, brings the voltage up from the old power plant to send it down to the substation to send it out. We do oil testing samples every year. The samples on the transformer itself look good, but the LTC, we still wanted to have it checked. The LTC is a load tap changer. It adjusts the voltage in the transformer from what comes in, from KCP now, or, excuse me, Evergy. So, and it moves quite a bit, and there's usually a lot of wear in it. So, we, we still wanted it checked out, and also to have the oil processed and the contactors and everything looked inside. And we were also wanting to do the painting on the, the 10 MVA transformer we have down at the old substation, since the transformer's starting to get a little rusty looking. So, we wanna protect the only transformer we have right currently. As I said, we budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for the job. Their bid is $25,775. That's to do the painting, and also do the scope of work that we were asking them to do. There's some optional testing that we can do for $4,500, which is, it's, they're all really good tests, but during the testing process, if something happens, we have a fail, we're down. That's that transformer, and I'm not willing to risk that at this time. When we have another substation, then we could do that. And also, the contractor agreed with that, so if they find a contractor kit, or a contractor that's bad, they have a contractor kit that costs $18,000, $18,600. If they order that kit and have it on hand when they come here, and we do not need it, then we have to pay a 20% restocking fee. But since they can get the kit the next day, and come back and change it out, that's why we chose to wait until we see what's going on with the contactors. So, as I said, the bid is $25,775 with, it could be a $18,600 add if, if the contactors are bad. So, do we have any questions?
So, the conclusion to that is we're under budget on this?
Yes, sir.
That's what we like.
You're a poor budgeter, aren't you? In the right way.
I try to overb, what I do is I go out a year ahead of time and bid all these projects, and then what that number, those numbers are, I add 10%, and usually, and put that in my budget, so that way, I'm usually under budget if...
Yeah, that's, I get it. It's not bad.
So...
So, would we not know a contact's bad now? I mean, what, what's a bad contact do?
Basically, they, they're just, the contactors are teeth, and they, they wear down, and after time, when they, as they wear down, they might not get a good contact, and they'll skip a tooth, and it's kinda cog in a wheel kinda deal.
Yeah, okay.
So, if that happens, then the, when they're tapping, the tran, uh, transformer is tapping, it could go out of control and close itself out. So, we just wanna make sure that they're all good, and double-check, make sure that we don't have anything that's worn down. And if they are worn, then replace it.
Okay. And that's part of the maintenance, is to look for that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks. Any other questions for Chris? Thank you, Chris.
Yes.
Any other comments from the public on this agenda item? For the council discussion? No? I maintain a motion.
Does she go through that? Julie, can you do the chair?
Yeah, you run with this one, Julie.
This is a, if you don't, I think I...
I, I move that we approve the maintenance agreement for the Public Works at $25,000, $25,775, and possibly an additional $18,600 if needed.
Second. It moves in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 1430, prohibiting the construction of water wells within the city limits. Rob?
I know who you want to apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. We have for your consideration this evening, ordinance number 1430, which deals with construction of private water wells within the city limits. I'll give you a little bit of background on how this came about. So, we were approached by Douglas County for comments, as a resident within the Baldwin City Limits had applied for a permit to drill a private well on their property. Just for information purposes, Douglas County issues all permits and performs all inspections on private water wells and septic systems, even those within the city limits. Staff did object to this request, and Douglas County ultimately did deny the permit. Why did, or why would Baldwin City object to this request? And I came up with three things, pretty quickly, that I'd like to go over with you. First is protecting our revenue stream. We've invested heavily in infrastructure in this city, in underground piping and service lines, raised towers, pumps, we're in the business to sell water. The second thing is protecting our water table. We don't know if at some point, we as a community will need this water ourselves. We may have to drill, we may have to drill our own well someday. I don't know. But part of it is protect the water table. The third item that I have come up with is protecting our public water system. We adopted and governed by the 2003 International Plumbing Code. It clearly states in section 608 dot 6 dot 1, and this is verbatim, "Cross connection between a private water supply and a, and a potable public supply shall be prohibited." That one single chapter and verse in itself is enough for us to object to requests for a private well. I understand that there are backflow prevention devices that are available to prevent cross-contamination. I also know these devices require annual maintenance, and testing, and certification. That being said, these devices do fail. I'm not willing to risk even possible contamination or commingling between our treated public system and a private, non-treated water system. Adopting this ordinance will put in writing, black and white, our position on private water wells within the city limits. Glenn, if you wanna, do you have anything else you'd like to add to that?
No, I really don't, just so long as you understand what the process will go through, since we do not have a specific ordinance, many cities do, we just have never had that. But now, we're, we're getting requests for private wells inside the city, so as Rob said, it's now a permit that's controlled by the county, so they made that decision, and they've denied this current one, and so, we're gonna go ahead and just make, this just clarifies what would, what has been standard practice apparently in Baldwin City for a long time, which has never had the need for an ordinance, the county has always controlled it. So, just like any other city in Kansas, we like to exercise local control, rather than leave this in the hands of the, of the county, not that they do a bad job or don't understand the issues, but we have local government for a reason here. So, that's why we're before you asking for an ordinance here, that exclusively bans these things going forward.
I have a couple of questions. Do we have any other current private wells in the city waters that you're aware of?
Not privately owned. There are a handful scattered amongst town that, that are owned by the state of Kansas, their, their water wells, they do check periodically the water table in this area, but that's the only ones, we don't have any privately owned water wells within the city limits.
Do we get many requests for private wells?
Only one other in the last six months, that was the owner of the... That was the owner of the car wash.
And we didn't grant that one either.
It never got to the permitting process. Once we explained to the owner of that property that it would be either or, he couldn't have both, it was either a private well or a city connection, he backed away from that.
Any other questions for Rob? Miss, agenda item? All right, thanks, Rob. Sir, would you like to speak?
Okay. I'll do a few additional things. As Mr. Kramer stated before, you can't just have a policy to deny things. You do have, you do need to have ordinances in place, because those ordinances are there for a reason. Policies just isn't good enough. At, at best, it's misleading, at worst, it's outright deceptive. And then my, one of my questions I had when my, I was told my permit was denied, which denied right now doesn't necessarily mean anything with my permit yet. I still have full appeal process to go through, so it's not, it may be in limbo right now, but I have the appeal to go through. So, I did also hear about the other application that was put in while that, where a question was asked, and I do have a problem with that, because it was, there was no basis given for rejecting a request for well based on code. And my understanding of the code is that it's time until there is an ordinance in effect. Wells are allowed by the code. Cross connections are allowed. Wells without cross connections are allowed. I am allowed to drill a well and not connect it. I don't have to connect it. And so, the code does allow that at this time. Your suggestions from a city management standpoint, I totally agree with you. I don't have a problem with it. I don't have a problem with anything going forward. The only issue I have is at the time of my permit application, according to the code, and this has been backed up to me by code administrators elsewhere, that this is allowed, and you have to have something in the code that does prohibit it in order to deny a permit. You can't just have an opinion or a policy or, or disagreements on, on stuff. You have to have a conflict within the code. My property right now does meet all the minimum distance guidelines, everything, and right now the county is, as he stated, is in charge of water well construction in the county. So, that as it stands, I was told that by Ed Corton that he would allow you as council members at this point to overrule him if you see that best, so that I can proceed with my permit application. So, that's all I have to ask for you. If you want to discuss more or whatever before you get back to me, no problem. If you have any questions, go ahead.
I do have a question. So, your permit was with the county, correct?
Yes.
So, the appeals process would be with the county? Correct.
But the county, the health department told me that because the city members here are in disagreement with them to come to you guys. So.
But you would still appeal to the county?
I can appeal to the county.
Correct.
I can appeal further within the city, I can appeal with the county and go through the process there, and I can also appeal at the state level. And I have, I believe, a year to do so from the time of my application.
Any other questions? That was my question. All right. Thanks, sir. Any other comments from staff or the public? Council comments? Discussion?
I guess from my perspective, I think it comes down to, I mean, two things. One, I mean, clearly we've established a practice in the community by not having any private wells today. I'd like to continue that practice with this ordinance. I think the question becomes, you know, is, is, is the application feasible for lack of their, of an ordinance? You know, because of that lack of ordinance, are we, do we even have a position to say no? And is it truly up to the county to do that? So, I don't know the answer to that, and I guess that goes to your question around appeals process, but I, I do think for the reasons stated that I would like to see us continue the practice of no private wells in the city and button up this, obviously this gap that we have in ordinance, but I just don't know how that affects this application. Like, maybe you can comment on it. Maybe we don't know.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know whether passage of this ordinance, if it does get passed, I, I, I wouldn't think that it would close off avenues for this particular application to be appealed up, given the ordinance is passing out, but I don't know that for sure.
Yeah. My, part of my issue is the county obviously regulates this, and they're obviously the enforcement mechanism, which means, you know, backflow preventers and all this, you know, are they going to, are they going to enforce this properly? Completely out of our control, yet it's our water supply that's potentially at, at risk. So, I have a little bit of problem with having an outside entity controlling enforcement of something that affects the city potentially. And it's just kind of the way it's been set up. I don't know how to mitigate that other than this ordinance going forward.
Mr. Nelson, did you have another?
I do have.
So, typically when we shut down public comment, that's it, but I'm going to allow you, just so you know.
Okay. Okay, I'll, I'll make this my last one.
All right.
For clarification, there are other private wells within the city limits already. There's, I believe, three. They are on the state website. You can, there's a map, an interactive map you can look up. Two of them, I don't know the location of. One of them is over at the second and Elm location. The well is still existing there, whether it's, the state says it's active yet. It doesn't say it's capped or anything like that.
That's where I, I used the little second now, and that's why I'm going, huh?
Just, just over on the other side from there. Then, your, your comment on backflows, it's really very simple as far as any other backflow device in town. The county does not have to regulate that. They can give the control of that since it's connected to your supply, it can be given to them. So, that's really not an issue. As far as enforcement of it, it's really like any other thing. They don't generally come into restaurants, gas stations and say, hey, we've got to see your, but if there is any, ever any issue, then they go back and make sure it's been logged, because that's required to be logged and done on time, and if it's not, then there's issue. So, and then as I said before, a water well does not necessarily have to be connected to the public water system. So, there are other options, so that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you for the extra time.
I guess I have one more question for you.
Oh, if you have a question.
One more question for you. So, what is your intent with this application? I mean, would you be willing to limit it to any, certain applications? Or it's, you want to continue, you want to maintain the right to do everything as far as connecting backflow?
There, there are some limitations to it. Obviously, one of them is the connection to the city sewer, so I understand there would need to be an agreement worked out on as far as sewer costs. As far as the water well goes, I'm, I would like it to be more than irrigation, but I'm not necessarily looking for it to supply everything in my house, not necessarily looking for it to be connected, I'm not necessarily looking to stay connected to the city either. I'm, I'm open to the option of being solely on my well and disconnecting from the city water and no cross-connection conflict at all. So, I'm, I would, I would like it to be more irrigation, but I'm fairly flexible beyond that. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Those are council comments? Discussion?
I agree with Scott. I'm trying to, you know, you think about this application that's with the county moving forward, and as you said, buttoning up to make sure that we can govern and enforce what we need to here. Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm still a little bit confused over the county, what their powers are here in city limits. I'm on a septic system, so I had to, it crashed a couple of years ago, and I had to get a whole new system, and the health department, county had to come in, I went through the same process. It's just confusing to me to know where we stand and what we're capable of enforcing.
Yeah, I guess my question is, if passed, that's ordinance, that doesn't necessarily affect that application.
Right.
Yeah, I think he still has the option to go through those processes.
Right.
As he deems necessary, but this is moving forward.
Yeah, I mean, I fully support the ordinance going forward. It's, the question is, is, you know, the backward look into the point made, there wasn't an ordinance, we made the application. Now, they've denied it, it sounds like, deferred to us, but it sounds like they could be reopened and appealed back. So, I'm not sure there's even any discussion around that application. It's around, in my opinion, the ordinance is what we need going forward.
Right.
And that's a separate issue that will be dealt with, I think, in the process that we need to go through. Which may be more conversation, you know, with Mr. Nelson, with the county, you know, what are the options, you know, is there, you know, is there a middle ground, you know, is it all or nothing? So, I, I don't think it's over by any stretch. It's a separate discussion going forward. And back to this, I think I, I support this as, as written for the reasons that Rob articulated, one, following the practice, and two, the three, three reasons he identified, so.
Good. Or did you get, saying something there?
Um, no, I think that answered my question. Right, yeah, thank you.
Anybody else have any comments or? So, that's the council, or you make a motion, or move it to the second?
So, yeah, so is this first reading considered or?
Correct, it's the council discretion whether they're passing ordinance on the first reading or the second.
I don't see any reason to change, you know, our process of doing two readings unless there's, unless we worry about a slew of applications coming in.
It might give us that time individually, we want to investigate, learn more about what's going on.
And get some more feedback, you know, from the community about this more again. So, I prefer to kind of stick to that two reading. If the rest of council.
That sounds good.
All right, council, committee report, budget and finance, Scott?
Uh, yeah, we had a meeting since our last council meeting, and really what the extent of it was is to connect with the department heads and talk about the proposed budget that was discussed in the, the budget work session, just to make sure that, you know, there were no outliers, that they thought, you know, needed to be addressed. And, I mean, really the, I think everybody understood the process, they appreciated being involved in the process, the level they were. That was communicated by all the department heads, and I think everybody was comfortable with what the proposed budget did for their individual departments. I will say that a common, consistent message from all of them was they're very concerned about competitive salaries for their personnel. So, that was a, a theme throughout, and, you know, want to make sure the council's aware of that, I think we all are, and I know we've got a salary study in process.
Correct. Glenn's already signed a.
It is a process, yeah.
Okay.
They've begun.
So, we've started that process, we'll get some feedback on that, and I think they're interested in obviously trying to be competitive in the area to, you know, maintain the quality of folks that we have and attract new ones. So, that was probably the biggest outcome of that, was just the salary competitiveness, I think it was five years ago we did that.
Five years.
Yeah. And the suggestion might be to do it more frequently, but they're interested in that, and I think we need to pay attention to that, and that will be a big conversation around the 2023 budget. We'll get that report back, but I think after we.
Should have it back by the end of this year.
Yeah, so we'll get it back, we'll already, we'll already done the 2022 budget, so it'll be 2023. So, and so we had, next meeting is this Friday, seven forty-five, second floor, City Hall.
Community development, Susan?
We have not met since the last meeting, so no updates there. And public safety, same thing, have not met.
Public course and utilities, Julie?
Uh, yeah, we met and had a presentation from Lutz, Daly, and Green Consulting Engineering on establishing a new additional substation. Still working on location and cost for that. Franklin Five was in a short discussion about expanding their territory for control of the rural water line. They have declined that, and so now the process is going to start to plan and budget for the replacement of the water line from North one fifty road to East eighteen hundred road to the north one hundred road, and that's going to be around a hundred and fifty thousand plus to do that. Still working on complaints regarding plug culverts and washouts in the alleys caused by the heavy rains that we've had. The guys are having a meeting with the Douglas County Public Works on the chip and seal project. I think that meeting's on June fifteenth, and they'll have an estimate of time to begin on that after the meeting. Recording device was installed on pump number two at the water pumping station to diagnose a starting issue, and then we'll develop a repair plan after getting that data back. Also getting options and quotes for change and upgrading on old motor control centers. Majority are antiquated and are no longer available, and most of the ones that are in use now were just used. Water leak on main line north of the pumping station a week later had to excavate the same location. There was a cracked pipe about eight inches on the bottom of the line. And our next meeting is July eighth at nine o'clock.
Legislative, Brian?
We haven't met since the last meeting, and the only thing we discussed was this wide well regulation ordinance, the draft ordinance. If we could get back on the schedule again, I think we were meeting fourth Wednesdays at eight o'clock, if that works with you, Scott? I'm flexible.
Will be the next one be?
The twenty-first July. And then AMRE, if we could just maybe set fourth Thursdays, or fourth, fourth Wednesdays, I'm sorry.
At what time was it?
At eight o'clock.
And that one doesn't, I'm out that week.
Should we do about third Wednesday, say eight o'clock? I, it makes no difference to me.
Yeah.
It's arbitrary.
So, third. You said, I'm sorry, you said the second? I thought you said the twenty-first of July.
So, fourteenth.
Fourteenth, that works. That way, okay.
So, every month and the third?
Yeah, let's try that.
City administrators, staff?
Well, yes, as we just mentioned, we do have another wage and salary study underway with Austin Peters, who did our same study about five years ago, so continuing on with the same group, did a great job for us last time, and they'll, they'll do it again here. So, yeah, unfortunately, we'll miss our budget window here this year, but, you know, we'll pick it up the next year, though. Also, this afternoon got a proposal to do the community engagement piece of the community planning we did with Patty Gentry last year, since about this time, it's in the summertime, wasn't it? So, I'll have that for you at the next council meeting. Scott had that here this afternoon, so we'll have that in the packet for your review next time, so. And today we did interviews, interviews, interviews for the, the court clerk position that is currently open, and we had a number of really good interviews, and we got two more scheduled for tomorrow, and hopefully we're going to get a decision by the end of this week on that. Today, we also got our information from the county as far as our budget assessed valuation and the revenue neutral budget number, which we will share with the budget finance committee. You'll be having to hold your breath until Friday morning, sit on pins and needles till you get that number. I know it's much anticipated, so they promised to have it by June fifteenth and shortly before the end of the day. My golly, they didn't deliver it. So, there we go. So, good timing all the way around on their part. So, that'll be important for the council, as you remember, going forward now, because our budget process is a little bit different because of Senate Bill thirteen, which I think we've talked about, so we don't want to talk about it anymore, but it now dominates the way we do budget in Kansas. So, by July sixth, next council meeting, we'll have to make the decision about the revenue neutral part or not. That, that'll be a key decision point for the city to go forward. And that'll, that'll be a key decision point for the city to go forward, which does change a little bit upon how we've done budgeting in the past. With the potential of two separate hearings now on our budget. But anyway, the numbers are, are interesting, and as you probably guessed, assessed valuation, Douglas County, and even our neck of the woods has, has gone up substantially here in, in the past year. So, um, so that's good news or bad news, depending on how you want to interpret that. So, anyway, but it's, it's, uh, it's, it's, uh, well, it's questions we have to deal with, and that's all part of the process now. Um, so, uh, how, what else? Seems like budgeting has dominated my life here recently. What else can I think about?
All right, any other staff comments? Council comments? I only have two things. Uh, we're going to have a budget work session the last Tuesday of June. And the last Tuesday of July will be a substation work session. Our substation planning.
I just have one thing, if that's okay. I would just like to thank the Recreation Commission and our Public Works Department. Um, they had the first rec concert, the movie night, at Sullivan Square Saturday. Casey and I sat on a mural bench and enjoyed some red dirt country and some Tom Petty and Ghostbusters a little bit. Um, great job. It was a great crowd, perfect night. It was so good to see that space. It's being used quite a bit. There's church service this Sunday there, it's on Father's Day. Um, so, just a thank you to Rob and his crew for keeping that place looking good, and the Rec Commission for programming some great things. I know Luminary Art Center has some concerts coming up. It's going to be a big summer there. Just want to say thank you.
Finally.
We're working on getting the refrigerator out there for some.
Right, yeah. Jessica mentioned that. It was Flatlanders. I'd like to thank them, too, I forgot. They provided great food there. The name of the band was Flatlanders, and then we had Flatlanders Restaurant. It's kind of a festival.
All right. No executive session needed, that I'm aware of, correct? Motion adjourned.
Move we adjourn?
Second.
Yours, thirded. I'll third it.
Remove the second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes, we are adjourned.
Is that what? We have a fourteen minutes. He says the twenty-first. You can just keep it on the second. Second going forward.
Oh, okay, I thought you were doing it back.
First agenda for Friday. I think we won't start talking about the memorandum of understanding. So, right now, we have. I mean, those are the two that.